We'll go ahead and get started. Still waiting on one council member for the roll call. We've got Steve Shelton, Nathan Boyd, Tyson Jackson, waiting on Trace Price, who should be here momentarily. Please rise for a pledge of allegiance followed by an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tyson, we pray for us, please.
Heavenly Father, we come to you this day thanking you for this wonderful day. Even though we know it's cold outside, thank you, God, that we have a warm place to stay. Father God, we ask you to bless Social Circle. As we make a decision that impacts the citizens of Social Circle, we ask you to bless us, Father. Put you into our minds as we make the decisions what's best for Social Circle. In your son Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Tyson. Okay, I do have a few announcements. All of these announcements are for here in the community room. Of course, we have our council meeting tonight. Tree board meeting is January the 23rd at 6:00 PM. Planning Commission, January 28th, 6:00 PM. House Bill 581 Public Hearing, February 6th, 11:00 AM. Council Work Session, February 6th, 6:30 PM. House Bill 581 Public Hearing, February 6th at 6:30 PM. Historic Preservation Meeting, February 11th, 6:00 PM. Downtown Development Authority Meeting, February 13th at 9:00 AM. Our next council meeting, February the 18th at 6:30 PM. And our final bill, House Bill 581 Public Hearing, is February the 18th at 6:30 PM. Okay, do we have any presentations?
No, Mayor, I believe those got postponed with the postponement from last night.
Okay. Downtown rundown?
Downtown rundown, Amber is here.
Good evening.
Hey, Amber.
We've got a short and sweet rundown for you guys tonight. First on the list is our Chocolate Crawl. This is our annual Valentine's Day event. The Chocolate Crawl will take place on Thursday, February 13th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM in downtown. Participants can come out and visit the businesses, collect chocolate treats. And then Thorn and Thistle will be selling fresh flowers during the event. She's also going to offer free delivery within the city limits for Valentine's Day. And then last on the list is Coffee and Conversations. Coffee and Conversations is our monthly networking meeting that we have. We've decided that this will be the last Tuesday of the month for going forward for this year. So everyone kind of knows. This month, it will be hosted at the Welcome Center by Katie Miles, who's with Lantern Realty. So make plans to come out on Tuesday, January 28th at 9:00 AM and join us for that. And that's all I have.
Any questions for Amber? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Citizen request, I don't believe we had anyone sign up for that. Do we have any council requests?
Just asking where we're going to be at with Burt's Hill.
It's been evaluated and waiting on the engineering report for all that. As of right now, it looks like that the recommendation of the engineers is to actually replace the whole thing because there's actually some rafters and things that need to be replaced as well. Is that correct, Robbie?
Yes.
Yeah. So we're just waiting on the engineer's report.
So we got a six-bat rafters rotten and we're going to tear it all down?
I can't respond to that at this moment. I haven't seen the engineer's report just yet.
We put an engineer on something that construction guy could have went out there and just looked at it and told them we could fix it. I mean, I mean, this is... I mean, that's fine. I just, I don't, I don't think we should have put engineering money into a, a field.
We're just trying to do it safely.
Tyson, turn your mic on, please. I thought I clicked it. All right. Okay, anything else from the council? I, I do have one comment to make. I'd like to thank our city staff and the Public Works Department for the way they handled the ice and snow over the weekend, getting the roads cleared, getting, getting everything safe for us. So I certainly do appreciate your efforts and what you did for doing that. All right, next up, we have the agenda approval.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda and move item five from the consent agenda and make it number seven under new business. Lakewood borderline.
And what about item one? We need to do something with that, right? That we can't talk about it?
That over there.
Do I have a public hearing?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, we can, we can handle that one, but are you?
Okay.
But do we take off the agenda?
No.
Okay.
A second, Steve, motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on the agenda. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Agenda is approved.
All right, next up, we have a series of public hearings. The first one, House Bill 581, I believe we are removing that.
No.
We're going to table it.
Yeah, we can't, we can't remove it because it's been advertised in one of our two newspapers. However, it did not run correctly in the Walton County newspaper. We submitted all the information to the newspaper correctly, but the newspaper ran ad from the school board instead of ours. And so therefore, the hearing for tonight wasn't advertised correctly. And so we are recommending that this be tabled to February 6th at 11:00 AM. We will be having the first of three hearings at that time. And then that will cover us on our requirements on, on the, on the legal ads.
Okay, I'll entertain that motion to table.
Make a motion to table.
Second.
To February 6th at 11:00 AM.
Okay. Got a motion from Nathan and a second from Steve. Is there further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion passes. All right, we now have a series of public hearings and it looks like most of them are related. Ashley, do you want to introduce these for us?
Good evening, yes, I will be, we will be doing all the public hearings before we do a vote on these items. So I'll introduce items and then we can open the public hearings for each of these items. So the first one that we have is... For the request to annex property into the city limits of Social Circle for the purpose of requesting a rezone and special use that would allow for the development of an industrial data center campus in the light industrial zoning. This request is also being done in conjunction with a future land use map amendment, a request to rezone from ag or agricultural to light industrial, and a request for a special use that if approved would permit a data center in light industrial zoning as well. This, this application triggered a development regional impact study by the Northeast Regional Commission. And that final report, it should be in your packets now. We received that from, from the Northeast Regional Commission not too long ago. The developers conducted a traffic study that identified the impacts of the proposed development. According to the study, the proposed campus would have one access point along Social Circle Parkway and a secondary access point on Amber Stapp Stutter that would be for emergency use only. The study indicated that the data center would generate approximately 227 new external trips during morning peak hours and approximately 191 trips during the evening or night peak hours, with around 1,769 two-way trips being generated during a 24-hour period. This request also triggered the need for a community meeting that the applicant held on December 4th of 2024. The developers addressed concerns regarding stormwater runoff, noise, and impacts on utility capacity within the area. In addressing the stormwater runoff, the developers indicated that their plans would meet, if not exceed, the standards that are set forth by Georgia EPD or Environmental Protection Division. They also added that concerning the noise that they anticipate no more than 30 decibels at the nearest residential structure at any point throughout the day. With regard to the impacts on utilities within the area, they stated that they would work with the city and the various electric providers in the area to ensure that their operations did not negatively, negatively impact residents within the area. They also mentioned that the cooling method used for the computers and servers in the building would be that of either water or air technologies, but it would be dependent upon the utility that was available at the time. And that is all I have on the annexation request.
Okay. Is the applicant here and would you like to speak?
Yes, can you guys hear me?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're on video with us. Yes, sir.
Yeah, so my name's Ryan Hughes. I work, or I run Selfish Investors. I'm partnered with Scott Green here, who is my civil engineer on the project. First of all, I apologize for not, not being there in person. I was, I was actually in the city's Social Circle all day yesterday after flying up from Florida. But unfortunately, had some, some prior commitments today, so had to come back last night. And I appreciate you guys letting me do this by video. Ashley did a great job describing what we're trying to build and, you know, what we're looking to do with the annexation portion of it. And really, what you have is four total sites. And of those four sites, two are, or there's five total sites, five total parcels. One, parcel number five, if somebody can put the map up, is, we're leaving as is. It's staying in Walton County and staying as agricultural. Parcels one and two are already in the city's Social Circle, so we'll need to annex those. And we're really talking about parcels three and four here, which we would be bringing the city's Social Circle to bring them into the same city as parcels one and two. And then additionally, bring them into the city's Social Circle because the city can provide us with the necessary utilities, water and sewer, so on and so forth, that we need to, to do this development. Overall, we're, we're developing a four-building, about 1.8 million square foot data center campus that would receive its power from the power lines, the 230 kilovolt power lines on the northeast corner of the site. And as Ashley said, the main access point is on Social Circle Parkway with, with an emergency-only access point on Amber Stapp. That's, you know, that's, that's what we're hoping to do here and, and we're grateful for the city's support and any feedback you guys have.
Hey, Mayor and Council, I'm Scott Green. I walked up here, I didn't know if Ryan would be on, be able to get on video and audio. Thank you for that interview, Ryan. We've met with, we met with the city manager. As Ashley spoke to her earlier about the utilities for the project. Met with, met also with, with the city's engineering consultant and Eric together to talk about the possible water and sewer use for the project. And they feel like the, the uses and flows that we've anticipated part of the project would fit within the, the city's, you know, near-term, near-term plans. So just wanted to add that. Thank you so much. Here to answer any other questions you guys have.
Any, any questions for the applicant? Okay.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. If not, I'll open the public hearing. We'll open each one of these individually since it was advertised that way. First one being Annexation 2024-001. We had... One, we didn't have anybody to speak for this application, but we had several people sign up to speak against. So I'll call on Michael Carter.
Good evening, I'm Michael Carter, 138 Amber Stapp Stutter Road. I'm going to be honest with you, this was a lot easier practicing in the mirror than it is getting in front of everybody. I know I had to put down for speaking against more than the opposition of kind of in between what is good and what is bad. I would also like to say good evening to all of you and thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council, for allowing me to speak. And also would like to say thank you to Ryan and Scott. They have been very much helpful in answering questions. I just had a couple of concerns and my concerns are this. One, the number one is going to be noise. Currently, I have gone through as much as I can of the city codes and we don't necessarily have a code that talks about noise, decibel limits, things of that. Also, construction time. What time can construction go and not? Currently, like I said, I am on Amber Stapp Stutter Road. I'm right near where the new industrial warehouses are going. Pouring concrete tonight and it is all night long, all the time, and it starts early in the morning and goes late at night. Now, we're talking about putting something else next to my property and my neighbors' properties as well as everybody who's here. What are we going to do about the noise and the construction time of everything? And I honestly feel like that's more of a city question than a Ryan and Scott question. They have said they will respect us and respect the neighbors and everything, and I really appreciate that. But it also works if there's stuff on paper. The second thing that just of my concern is with the surface ratio. Social Circle allows 25%. I believe in the application that was originally put there, over that, around 26, 27%. I don't have my numbers right there. I just know it's over 25. So what is the development going to look like at the end of that? And how are we going to shrink that to make sure we match what the city allows? Other than that, that's just two of my biggest concerns, as well as just the third one, the final one being traffic. We are putting a brand-new school in right there and we see in this traffic study, we're adding more and more motorists and stuff in that area. Well, what are we going to do about protection of the kids that are going to be going there? That's adding more vehicles, more tractor trailers. We already are in a heavy industrial aspect right there. So what are we going to do to protect the traffic pattern and protecting the school buses, teachers, and all that that are coming through there? So that is all I have to say. I do appreciate you guys allowing me to speak. And Ryan and Scott, I appreciate you guys as well. Like I said, I'm just in between, just trying to see where we're going to go with this and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wesley Stutterd, seven minutes, five seconds. Okay, thanks, guys.
I'm Wesley Stutterd. I live at 5174 Hawkins Academy Road in Social Circle. What I was just trying, the last meeting that we had, zoning and planning, that we were not given a lot of information about the details of what's going to be partaken, like how many gallons? Is it going to be city water, giving their water to that place and sewage? The place that's here, that's already struggling with water, struggling with sewage. I mean, we're going to add this million-square-feet building to it? And I, I, do y'all, are y'all previous to the information? How much water is being, going to be needed to cool those computers?
I'm not sure if we have that. Eric, do we have that information?
So I don't have the actual amount, but that was the subject of the, of the meeting that we, that we had had with the city engineer. And he was very confident that we had enough water capacity. And that's noted on the, on the DRI report as well. The main concern is also noted on the DRI report is sewer capacity. But that is being addressed with the new sewer plant that's being built.
Well, is, is that water that's cooling, is it going to be circulated or evaporative?
I don't believe they have. I don't believe they've decided on a cooling system yet, but that is a conversation for the engineer.
So we're trying to vote on, we're trying to, you know, pass through something through this town. We don't have hardly no information given to the public about what's going in, what, how it can affect us in, you know, being annexed into the city. I just feel that's kind of, kind of shady. I know that somebody might have signed the ND, non-disclosure, but anything that deals with NDs is kind of shady in my book.
Somebody's signed non-disclosure.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. I just heard rumors that somebody signed a non-disclosure. Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We also have to speak against the annexation, Ms. Valerie Walther.
I believe most of my concerns have already been addressed.
Okay, thank you, Valerie. Okay, I know I, I asked if there, no one signed up to speak for, but I didn't give anyone an opportunity if they're here to speak for that, to speak. So I'll give you that opportunity now. All right, hearing none, I'll close that public hearing and bring it back to the council for a decision.
The, the applicant also gets the remainder of their time to have a rebuttal if they, if they so choose and answer any questions. Seven minutes and 20 seconds is what they have left.
Yeah, if you guys can hear me, I can get a quick rebuttal and then Scott can maybe step in for the, the water use and the cooling system we're using. First of all, on the sound, in the city's Social Circle's code, there is a 90-decibel limit for crypto mining centers. This will not be a crypto, you know, Bitcoin-type data center. It will be an AI slash cloud data center for what's called a hyperscale tenant. But we are still willing to stick within that, the bounds of that, the 90-decibel sound limit and stick within the, the, that limit, which, Michael, as you know, when we talked about at the community meeting, was, or neighbor meeting, I should say, was the sound level of 90 decibels means it's about 30 decibels at 1,000 feet. And so that's, you know, where we get the 30 decibels figure and how the sound kind of peter out based on these buildings being 1,000 feet deep from the nearest residents. In terms of hours of construction, again, we're going to work within the, the restrictions that the city of Social Circle has. We don't intend on building, you know, spending overnight, overnight, developing these data centers. And we're willing to work with the community if there is any pushback on the hours that we ultimately do build it. On the traffic side, I would say you'd be hard-pressed to find a lower traffic use than a data center. It's a fairly employee-friendly business model. So there's not a ton of traffic in and out at, in the morning and the afternoon. And there certainly aren't any tractor trailers that you would see if this was a traditional industrial development. Because, you know, this is in a industrial character area and part of it's already zone industrial. And so, as you know, this is an area that ultimately will become industrial in the long run. You know, I would make the case that data center, if you worry about traffic, truck, truck, truck traffic, normal traffic, noise, is a much better use. On the impervious surface ratio, we will stick within the 25%. When we get a final site plan approved with the city, which is, you know, pending, pending result of nice meeting, the next stage in this process, we will work with the city to ensure that we're not crossing that 25% threshold. To be clear, we're not asking for any sort of variance in that regard. Scott, do you want to jump in on the, on the water side?
Sure, thank you. To kind of add on to what Ryan said earlier in this process we're in. So we're, we're going through the rezoning process with the city. We're also talking with the utility providers about how power will be serviced to the project, you know, where the fiber will be coming from and on top of the water and sewer usages. So as you build the, the design of, we're at that foundational moment where we're, where we're understanding what kind of utilities the city has. And to answer Mr. Stutterd's question on the water and sewer use, some municipalities have a lot of water that they need to use, some don't. So the cooling technologies in, in these data centers is multifaceted. Because of that, there's, there's several ways to cool the chips within the, the data centers, whether that is with air. Another, a couple of technologies related to water. There is a, it's what's called an adiabatic system. It's a larger water user. And then there's a closed-loop water system that's, it's a very, very small water user. As in, when you fill the system up, the only time it needs new water interjected into the system is if you have to take a coil down for maintenance. We can work with a social circle on when we do those initial fills. So it's at night when, not when everybody's taking a shower in the morning or the evening and during your peak uses. I, I see that in, in a lot of municipalities. And when we get to that stage, we'll work with the city on that. And to add, to add to Mr. Taylor's statement there, we work with their, the turnip seed, the city's engineer. In terms of the, of the sewer usage and the sewer treatment plant that the city is going for, there are some other sewer extension and main projects that are going to be around our site that we can incorporate in the development of our site that would ultimately go back and be city infrastructure that could be funded by the project.
And then the last, the last point I would make is as relates to the, the NDA conversation. I haven't entered into, I have not entered into any NDAs with anybody on the city council, the mayor, et cetera, nor have the mayor, city council, et cetera, entered into any NDAs with me. Don't know where that rumor came from, but it's, it's not true.
Thank you. Okay. Ashley, do you have something else?
I don't have anything else unless you guys have questions for me on the annexation.
Anything for Ashley? Hearing none, without objection, I'll close the public hearing for the annexation and bring it to the council for a motion.
We don't do, we're not going to do a motion yet because we have to go through all the public hearings first.
How's that work?
So...
Do you have to vote on them individually?
Well, we'll do that under new business.
Okay.
So, so we just have to get through all the public hearings and then we'll vote.
Okay. Let's move into the next public hearing.
So the next public hearing is for a future land use map amendment. That is mainly just a bit of housekeeping. If the annexation passes, we would just need to add in the two parcels... Susan, if you could bring back up the PowerPoint, I'm sorry. The, we would just have to add in the two parcels labeled three and four on the current side on our future land use map and designate them as the industrial character area, which matches with parcels that are labeled one and two on this, this map here.
Any questions? The applicant like to speak on this one?
I'll, I'll be, I'll be brief and leave time for any questions from council or, or the audience. But kind of getting back to parcel five. Parcel five is owned by the same landowner currently and will be purchased by Ryan as part of the overall project. But in, in talking with Walton County, the county and, and some of the, some of the neighbors right there, we decided to keep that property in the county, keep it as agricultural, not make it part of this, this application that we're submitting. I just wanted to, just want to bring that up as, you know, kind of a coordination item we've been doing with, with the county. Some of the folks that came to the public meeting we held and, and with city staff. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Rezone 20024, or 2024009. Y'all trying to confuse me up here on the, on the land use?
Land use.
Land use.
Okay, open the public hearing. If there's anybody here to speak in favor, please step forward. Anyone wishing to speak against, please step forward. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Put a vote on that one?
No.
Okay. All right, moving forward, rezon 2024009.
So this, this request is to rezone parcels two, three, and four, shown on your screens here, from agricultural to light industrial. Again, as Ms. Green mentioned, parcel five is no longer part of that request. The only reason it's included on the agenda is because it was a part of the original application. But that has since been changed. So as shown on the proposed site plan, the data center campus would be developed on approximately 344 acres and would have four buildings totaling at about 444 acres. and would have four buildings totaling at about four hundred and forty-seven thousand square feet each, which comes out to be a little over one point seven million square feet total. The site plan also shows the development having around thirty percent of impervious surface, just based off of this concept plan that we have, which again, is a concept plan. It's not a finalized site plan or anything like that. Um, the area is located within our watershed protection overlay district. Um, and section five point three, five point three point four point C of the UDC states that the maximum impervious surface ratio that's allowed in this overlay district is twenty-five percent. And there cannot be a variance asked on that. So the applicant would have to meet that, uh, twenty-five percent, um, by the time it gets to the site development stage, if, if this project gets approved. Um, and there is water availability currently along East High Tower Trail and Social Circle Parkway, but not in the immediate vicinity of the proposed site. Regarding sewer, there's no gravity sewer in the area, uh, currently. But as discussed before, um, there are projects in the future that, that will lend itself to, uh, sewer coming to this site. Any questions for me?
But they would be responsible for putting in that sewer?
Correct, so, so the way the city code reads right now for municipal utilities is if you're in, within three hundred feet of an existing water or sewer line, you have to connect. So if at the time of development, we've already ran sewer lines and they're within three hundred feet, they have to connect. Um, and, and I'm sure there will be, you know, we can probably enter into, you know, this is all hypothetical, but should the project get approved, like we did with the P and K stuff, we could potentially have some public-private partnerships going on as well, if you guys chose.
Anything else for Ashley? All right, we moving on, or do we need to have a public hearing on this? I'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone here to speak in favor?
The applicant gets to speak first to present the rezone, and then we'll do in favor.
Getting ahead of myself, come on down.
Yeah, so, so Ashley, Ashley did a good job describing it. What I would emphasize is, of the four parcels we're discussing, uh, parcel one is already zoned correctly for our use, light industrial. Uh, parcel two is in the, uh, industrial character area. So in the long term, future land use, um, is deemed to be a, a potential industrial site. And then three and four are, all we're trying to do is bring those in line with parcels one and two, um, from an industrial use. And, you know, grow the size of the campus, and most importantly, get access to the power lines down on the northeast corner of the site.
Okay. Any further questions?
Uh, no, I'm, uh, no, I don't have anything to add on top of what Ryan said. I just want to be here and answer any questions you guys have.
Any questions from council?
I do. Um, as far as the construction of this facility has, there, is there any kind of structure, schedule, like what hours?
From a timeline standpoint?
Yes.
Um, you want to take that run? I mean, I can.
Yes, Scott, you want to take it?
Sure, so, the city has hours of operation that we would be within. Um, you know, concrete pours are typically early in the morning, especially in the summer, heat, um, how concrete reacts with heat and how it cures. So, um, those pours are typically early in the morning. We work within the city's, um, city's operating hours for the construction of the project.
Anything else, any other questions? Okay, voting on this one? All right, public hearing, y'all are trying to confuse me tonight. Public hearing is now open for anyone that's wishing to speak in favor, please step forward. Anyone wishing to speak against, please step forward.
My name's Joe Chaney, and I'm wondering during this construction process, where is the water going to go? Uh, runoff, and then after it's built, where, I mean, we're talking about one point seven million square feet, where's this water going to go? See, I mean, I'm pretty sure if I'm looking at the map correctly, and I hadn't done a lot of research, is it going to go towards Means Creek, which Means Creek runs into the Hard Labor Creek reservoir? Uh, does anybody know that? I mean, we've got, you know, warehouses around here, I mean, what, what kind of retention ponds? I mean, we've got something sitting over in Rutledge right now, which is a part of Soul Circle, Rutledge, Morgan County, I don't know where it sits, but we've got a problem over there. Where's this water gonna go? Can anybody here, Ryan, this fellow behind me, anybody?
Scott, Scott and I could answer that, but I don't think we're supposed to, we're not, we're not supposed to talk right now, I'll think.
All right, I'm not. Okay, that's what I'd, I'd would like to know where our water's gonna go.
Joe, can you give us your address?
Five five one Soul Circle Fair Play Road, and my name's Joe Chaney, C H E N E Y. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. All right. Anyone else against would like to speak?
I'm not necessarily against, I do want to say something, if I may. I, I've heard a lot of talk about something, and I haven't heard an answer about it.
I'm Michael Davis, most of y'all know me. I live here in Social Circle one oh one Gabriel Way, been here many, many years. Uh, these data centers do use a lot of electricity, and I've heard power off and back and forth and back and forth. I haven't heard an answer about, do we know exactly how much power this thing is going to actually draw? And again, it seems that electricity seems to be a driving force behind this piece of property, because the line goes across that northeast corner, or northwest corner. I haven't, you know, I, I'd like to know the answers to that. Because I mean, these data centers are very, draw a lot of energy. And, uh, we know about power if it goes out, especially if the weather's cold, uh, you got an issue. If they could answer that about the power usage, would be a very important.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, anyone else wishing to speak for or against? All right, close the public hearing, get a vote. Oh yeah. We got you.
Thank, thank you both for your questions. Um, I'll start off with the stormwater question. So I, I'm a civil engineer, um, professional license here in the state of Georgia. Um, whether it's, whether it's water and sewer, I know your question's more pointed to stormwater, but there's, there are different sets of regulations we have to, we have to follow, whether we design, any, any of the types of infrastructure we design. Um, relative to stormwater, currently right now, as the site sits, the water does drain to Means Creek. Um, as we design the site, we, we wouldn't change the flow of that water for all of a sudden for it to go south. It's gonna, the topography is gonna dictate the way the water drains. Um, in terms of the runoff rate of what, how that water drains off the site right now, if, if your house is near Means Creek, or anybody's house is near that creek, the water drains off at a certain rate, um, at different stormwater events. And as civil engineers, we have to design, um, based on state regulations and local regulations to different, um, not theoretical, but different previously modeled stormwater events, two-year event, five-year event, ten, twenty-five, hundred-year event. Um, and in those regulations, we've got to ensure that our post-development, so after the site is built, during the site is built, that that rate of water is flowing off the site at the same rate it was in pre-development. So you ask, when you're creating all this impervious surface, how do you do that? So, whether, I, we will, we will abide by the twenty-five percent rule in the watershed here with the city. But no matter what that impervious surface is, as an engineer, uh, the engineer would have to design stormwater retention facilities, um, that if, if any of us have been to a Walmart or any type of development that's, that's been developed recently, those developments have stormwater retention facilities. So during construction, sediment is main, is kept on site, um, in accordance with the Georgia Blue Book and Stormwater Manual. And then in post-development, those detention basins provide water quality and water quantity controls, and velocity controls to make sure that the downstream, um, you know, receiving water body is receiving the water at the same flow rate it did during pre-development. Um, that answer?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and when, when is all that done? So, as I kind of described earlier about the building block of this process, the zoning, talking with the power companies, that next step, if this project should be approved, we would move into a site plan review with the city, where we would work with the city, Georgia Soil and Water, EPD, to design the site in accordance with those standards. So then, as it went under construction, um, we would meet those standards during construction and then post-construction. But that's the step, that's a detailed site design step after this. Um, to answer Mr. Michael's question about power, um, so Georgia is a customer of choice state. If, and this goes back, this predates data centers. Uh, I don't know when the year the exact regulation came in, into play, Shane might, but if you're a load over nine hundred kilowatts, so any, any manufacturer, any, any, um, you know, any project that is, uh, that, that you typically see, those customers can choose between, um, Georgia Power, uh, the different EMCs in the state of Georgia, or MEAG, and also Dalton Electric, um, to be their service provider, and that's been in play for many years now. So, one of the first things you do when you're, when you're finding a data center site is you go talk with the power company. And, 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 and if the power, if the folks I talk with, the power company stand right here, they'd say the same thing I'm saying, because I've heard them say it many times with many different folks. When we propose a load of our data center, currently, we're proposing eight hundred megawatt load. When we propose that load to the power company, they model it. So, Social Circle doesn't have a power grid, Walton County doesn't have a power grid, state of Georgia doesn't have a power grid. Everything east of the Rockies is all connected, um, from a power standpoint, from the transmission lines, the big five hundred KB lines we see, down to the distribution lines. And they put that in a model, and, um, something was formed in the seventies as, as NERC, NERC, North American Energy Regulatory Commission, I believe. Um, and what the power companies have told me is, that regulating body is a self-regulating bottle, body with Southern Company, Energy, all the major power providers. And one of the foundations of that model is, any load that comes on, whether it's a new house, a data center, manufacturing plant, can adversely affect the, your neighbors, whoever, the other customers own the grid. And I've heard that from folks at Georgia EMC, from folks at Georgia Power. Um, there's a set of standards they have to follow that's outside of the, the project's control, it's, it's an overall controlling factor that they have. So, it takes the power companies, um, you know, twelve to sixteen weeks to perform their preliminary evaluations. Um, we do what we call a load ramp, so we ask that power company, we say, um, you know, when could you bring this type of load to a, to a site? And if they say twenty twenty-eight, twenty thirty, um, we would, we would start to build that load then, then we would give that model, or give the load ramp to them, they would put it in their model. So, and, and I know I'm kind of being long on my explanation here, but there's a great deal of work that the power companies do to ensure that all their customers are serviced with power, no matter whether it's this project, or, you know, the new Publix in Covington, or anybody, or anybody's house. That's, that's all evaluated by the power companies, and they come back to us and say, this is when we can provide you with this level of power. And it may be in a phased approach, um, but that's, that's kind of the answer there, Mr. Michael. Does that answer your question, sir?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Mayor, was there anybody who requested to speak in favor of this particular hearing item? Who signed up?
This is for the rezone?
Yes.
This is for the special use, right?
No, this is for the-
No, this is the rezone, special use is coming up. No one's, no one signed in to speak in favor.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Ashley, special use?
Yes, so this is our last, last public hearing on these items. Um, so this is the request that is talking about the specific use of the data center. Um, in, in our UDC, we require a special use for any data center, um, to, to operate in a light industrial zoning. So this request is for, Susan, if you could pull up the PowerPoint, I'm sorry. Um, this request is for parcels that are labeled one through four here. Um, so, uh, like, like I mentioned before, parcel five is being left out. But, um, the, the special use request is on one, two, three, and four, because parcel number one is already zoned light industrial. So we've kind of already talked about the site plan that was proposed, um, and the, uh, the regulations that are in place that they would have to tweak, they would have to, uh, tweak their concept plan when we go into the, uh, official site plan development. Um, in the staff analysis, uh, we specifically address any issues that, that there may be, um, in regards to special uses, um, and if it can meet the special use specific standards, uh, provided in Article Three. And the specific use standards for a data center are covered under Section three point four point six point A. Um, and this outlines a data center as being a telecommunication equipment used for remote storage processing and the distribution of data. Uh, the proposed development and concept appears to fall within the parameters of this, uh, definition outlined by the section of the UDC. So there isn't anything, um, special. The, the main thing that staff wanted you guys to know about the concept plan versus the site development plan is that, um, this is in the WPO, and that, that impervious surface ratio would have to be addressed, which the applicant has stated they are, they are willing to come into compliance with.
Thank you, Ashley. Any questions for Ashley? All right, sir. You have the applicant, please. I keep forgetting about you, buddy.
No problem. Don't call me late for dinner.
That's right.
Um, I, I don't, Ryan, do you have anything to add? I'd like you to speak first, if you have anything.
No, no, nothing to add, just here for any questions.
Yeah, I don't either on this topic, just here for any questions, or answer any questions, thank y'all so much.
Are there any questions for the applicant?
I will have some probably, but if you want to do the public hearing first?
Yeah. Okay, we will have a public hearing on the special use. Sir? Hope people get to speak on this too? You got a public hearing, okay. You got me confused, all right, you go. We're opening up. Don't try to confuse me anymore, guys. Okay, we'll open the public hearing and see if there's anyone here to speak for this application. Yeah, boy. Mr. Alman?
Mayor, I had, uh, signed up for one of them, I think, I quit one of them.
That's all right, we'll let you speak.
I appreciate y'all, uh, taking time to let me speak. Don't laugh at my hair, please. Been out in this wind all day long. I was here at the last, uh, meeting and just, uh, asked some questions, pretty much, and what some concerns I had, and I said at that meeting then, that as far as I knew and from what I had been able to find out, that I was, I was not against the data center. I live at, I live on Part T Trail, um, which dead ends into that property that we're discussing tonight. And I know that any time in these situations, you know, it can, uh, get kind of contentious, and oftentimes, uh, talking about growth and things like that, residents feels like, feel like they're not being heard sometime, and, uh, don't have enough information. But, uh, I have, uh, there's, uh, several concerns I had before, and I had talked about those during the meeting, and, uh, asked about those, and talked with these gentlemen here after the meeting. And, uh, they seemed like that they were, uh, willing to hear our concerns, and that, uh, they were willing to do the- And they seemed like that they were willing to hear our concerns and that they were willing to do the, the right thing. And so I'm just back tonight to, to just, I don't want to be redundant, but kind of reiterate some of the things that I was concerned about. And some of those things have already been said again tonight. And so I'm just going to briefly go over them, and I, I would like that if y'all consider passing this or approving this, that you, that you document these stipulations that, that we have talked about and that they have talked about, so that they'll be on the record. And I, my list was, and, and, and once again, just, you've heard most of these things already tonight, access off the bypass to that facility, no access off Amherstap Road, except for the emergency access that I spoke of. I would like to see them go above and beyond on the wetland mitigation, because there are some wetlands down close to that power line in there. And we don't want to see that disturbed, so hopefully that'll be taken care of in a proper, proper manner. And they did mention that too, and when we were discussing this, that they would, that they would do that, not disturb any of the streams or waters or lakes and things that are already there. The noise control and the level of noise is, is a concern, too, because I live just probably, I don't know, probably fifteen hundred, two thousand feet from where they're talking about putting the data center at. So as long as that noise level is kept down, then I don't have a concern with that. Lighting, I don't know if, if we talked about that or not, but lighting on the property, if it would be required to be directed down and away from any surrounding areas, especially any, any houses or residents in there. And then, of course, anything that, that changes, if there's just a way that, I know that they have to go through y'all's planning and development and process, and that changes have to be addressed. But if there's some way that that could be, if there was a major change to the, to the site or something that was going on, that, that would be maybe posted somewhere where the citizens and residents of that area could, could see that. So that's my concerns, as I said, I, I went over before. And if they will meet these concerns and continue to agree with what they, to what they said that they would do, then I, I won't have an issue with it. I, I do think that there were some issues brought up by the planning commission that probably need to be addressed, and I hope that y'all would have addressed those. But as for me and what I understand and what I know, that's, that's my thoughts on it. Thank you. Uh, forty-nine twenty, Parte Trail. And these guys have already said that they left that parcel out, which is down at the end of our street. And I just want to say that I appreciate everybody that was involved in getting that done. That, that little parcel of land was left over from previous owner, and it kind of got included in that. But they did take that out. And all of us down there, we appreciate, appreciate them doing that, so, thank you.
Okay, we do have three people signed up to speak against. Michael Carter. All right. Good, okay. Kristy Stutter. Please give us your name and address.
Yes, I'm going to make sure I actually have this tilted down this time, because I got yelled at last time. Yes, my name is Kristy Stutter. I live at fifty-one seventy-four Hawkins Academy Road. We also have a farm at ten thirty Amberstap Stuttered Road as well. And as I've stated at the last meeting I was at last month, that we are the, the people that moved out there to farm and live out there, and we are the agriculture people. We have lots of land ourselves in conservation, so we understand what that is personally. What I would like to address today, and I wrote it down so I would stay on task and not waste anybody's time. But I want to say, while I don't disagree with that data centers create small amount of jobs, which is very few, because we've all talked about the low traffic impacts, that means not a lot of jobs, let's be honest. And they're specialized jobs. These aren't jobs you can come straight out of high school and graduate and go straight in. We all, you know, need to understand that, it's a specialized type of job. So I feel like that sort of diminishes the pro for that with some of the other cons, in my opinion. But we, they, but they don't, they don't create a lot of jobs, but they do create a monstrosity of a building that will be obsolete in ten to twenty years, depending on what article you read. This is including hard drive replacements every three to five years. What is the plan for the data center when it is obsolete? Then the city will have a massive building, this massive parcel zoned industrial and already annexed into the city limits. What then? Ten to twenty years, I mean, I'm almost forty years old, so that's, I've lived that already twice, so if you do the math. The data center also boasts a closed loop cooling system, which also could possibly use an antifreeze type cooling agent that would require them to have a water storage tower or retention pond of some sort to keep the chemical from contaminating the groundwater nearby. I also asked this, asked about this in the last meeting last month, and my question went unaddressed. There will also be a great deal of noise pollution coming from the humming of the hard drives and the massive generators when they're, and also when they're testing the generators frequently in service. And they're not your typical residential generators that we're used to seeing. Noise pollution doesn't just affect homeowners in the proximity of the, the project, but it also affects li, wildlife, their patterns, where they go, deer hunters, basically our way of life that we live every day. And we have also cows and a chicken farm, which, you know, I know seems not as important as technology, and it's not as cool, and it's not even up to date. But I guarantee you that everybody that is working at the data center also goes to the grocery store, and they depend on what we provide as well in this day and age. So, and the research I've done, I cannot find a data center that u, that operates under ninety decibels. Who will hold the company accountable for the sound pollution? And what will the repercussions be if they don't abide by the thirty decimal amount that's promised that I feel like has swayed even some of my neighbors to sort of support this project in fear of what could be there? That is disgusting to me, because this is, and I don't mean to be, you know, I don't want to step on anybody's toes till you shut down and stop listening to what I'm saying. But I feel like it has been a situation to where, oh, it could be worse, it could be this, it could be that. And the areas also referred to as an industrial character area. I would like to point out that the other industrial character being spoken about is industrial projects that we, that were never one in the area and that were opposed to begin with. Now it's just further bleeding into our area. So I would also like to, let's see, we did noise pollution. So not to mention light pollution, impact on power grid, needing access to water and sewage utilities that are already maxed out or just simply unavailable to the area. The list of cons far outweighs the pros, in my opinion. Although I am against the annexation and rezoning of the parcel altogether, if not for, and for the special use that I'm speaking for now, I'm opposed to all of it. I just didn't waste your time to sign up to each thing. I signed up for the last one so I could speak at the end. But it's for the sheer size of the parcel is huge compared to the size of the city as a whole. And for the purpose of stopping the bleeding of the industrial corridor into more and more rural Walton County. You know, rezone, the rezone to industrial could also open up a lot of unsavory uses for the land if the data center were to fall through to begin with. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Kristy. We have one more, James Evans.
Everything that I was going to talk about has already been addressed, and I just don't want to rehash it. But the young lady who spoke here summed up about everything I think a lot of people have been feeling, what happens if this doesn't take place. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, sir. All right. Uh, we move on to. Do you have a, or you want to respond to that?
I'll try and write as fast as I can. So I'll try to respond to some of these. I know, Ryan, you may have, you may have been responding to some. I'll let you take the noise portion. Let me, let me start with Mr. Alman. From an access standpoint, these facilities are, you know, very, very high security facilities. I've been in a data center before. They're one, one, one access in, one access out for all, all folks come into the data centers. Most of the campuses I've seen do have an emergency access, you know, thankful we've got that second access. That would not be a construction access, you know, everybody that's been on that road just knows where the railroad is and, you know, that, you couldn't even get over there with a low buoy for construction vehicles anyway. We're not intending to do that. But from an access standpoint, the reason there's one access, these data centers, like I've, the ones I've been in, just, just around here, you go through a gated access to get in the building, you've got to have a key card to get in, you got to get checked in at the front desk, and you got to have multiple key cards to get to those computers. So from a physical security standpoint, it's, you know, it's one of the most secure facilities I've, I've ever seen. So that's the reason for the one access. But also having that access off the bypass would, would keep, you know, all daily traffic on the data center from going down Amberstap and, and those residential areas. So just the need of the facility, paralleled with what we've heard, parallel to some, you know, site plan and characteristics we put on site, have that single access out to Amberstap. Or I'm sorry, out to, out to the bypass. From a wetland standpoint, and this is getting back to Mr. Chaney's question on stormwater as well. We've got a, we've had wetland consultants go out there and identify the different wetland characteristics on the site. We will have those characteristics on our site plan. We will plan around them to the best of our ability. There are, you know, as we go through the permit process for the city, all that will be on our plans and reviewed by the city. Uh, let's see, from a lighting standpoint, we will meet the city's lighting standards. And Ashley, you may have to help me out on some of those lighting standards. But I do believe we had talked about downlighting and, you know, the elimination of light pollution as it goes off the property. There's different foot candle calculations that the lighting engineers can do that could be, you know, reviewed by the city during that site plan process. It's not my, my forte and specialty on the civil side, but I do see that on projects from time to time. Let's see. From a, I wanted to, I wanted to skip the Ms. Stutter's questions on a job, from a job standpoint. I've seen data center companies, and I'm going to use Facebook in Newton County because it's close to us. They, they do work with the school system, and I've seen data center companies work in the high school systems. You don't need a college degree to work in these data centers. There are some technical, tech, technician jobs, highly skilled jobs that can be taught at the, you know, it's a career academy in the high school or technical college system. I have seen certain, I've seen certain data center companies work with the local and technology tech schools in, in different states to come, program and criteria to, to have those folks in the local community able to work in the, in the data centers. Now, there are college degree jobs from, from engineering all the way up to management of the facility, but there are jobs for multiple positions and multiple skill levels within a data center that I've, that I've personally seen. I believe we talked about power, we talked about water. Ryan spoke previously about noise. If you want to touch on that, Ryan, I believe I've, I've touched on the other notes that I've taken from Ms. Stutter and Mr. Alman.
Yeah, so I believe the question on noise was, how do you enforce us going above that, that decimal limit that we're willing to, to abide by, even though it's not a crypto data center? That it's more a question for the city council and, and the mayor. I, you know, we're going to abide by those rules. If we violate those rules, I don't know the, exactly what the ramifications are in terms of fines, anything like that. But we're not building this plant or this data center campus to go above that ninety decimal level. Full stop. And then another question was on the obsolescence of data centers, I believe it was ten to twenty years. You're right, you are right that technology advances very quickly. You mentioned at one point the hard drives have to be redone, you have to redo all the hard drives every three to four years. That, to be clear, is something that happens on the interior of the building. There would be no change to the outside of the building, no change to noise, no change to anything. That would affect people outside the building. As far as obsolescence, what I'd say is, right now, the hyperscalers, data center developers, myself included, are prepared to invest billions upon billions of dollars in these campuses, which I think gives you a good sense of, you know, we're not putting, put hundreds of billions of dollars into data centers if we think they're going to go obsolete anytime soon. We think they'll be an important part of the economy going forward, and hopefully an important part of Social Circle's tax base. I think, I think that was it on the question, but on this one, happy to answer.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'll close the special use public hearing. And now I ask the council if they're ready to vote on each of these public hearings.
I do have just a couple of questions.
Sure thing. Susan, can you also pull back up the PowerPoint, too, just so I can go over recommendations? Thank you.
While she's pulling it up, would the city need to do anything as far as fire protection? I mean, I know the police probably wouldn't have anything to do, but as far as fire, nothing special for us on that side?
Fire will review the site plan, so they'll, they'll have input on our site plan because it goes through our office and it also goes through the local fire marshal office. Ken, I'll let you address that question for sure.
All of our concerns will be addressed.
All of our concerns, sir, will be addressed on, it's either site plan review or building plan review with special extinguishing systems and requirements that, for life safety and, and building requirements. With the equipment we already have on order, we'll be well-covered on the equipment side.
And then what is the role of selfish? Are you guys building like a spec building, and a company's going to come in and take over that building? Or how will that, how will that work? I mean, the reason I'm asking the question is, we do want to have good, community-focused companies here in Social Circle that are going to invest in our schools and do things like that. And so I just didn't know if y'all are going to build a building and then hand it off to somebody else, and they're going to manage and run it, or how that operates.
Yeah. Very likely what will happen will, we will be developing this campus, this four-building campus as a build to suit for a hyperscaler, meaning one of AWS, Google, OpenAI, who just had a big announcement yesterday, Microsoft, et cetera, would be the tenant for all four buildings and would sign a lease with us. Just like, you know, at a, dozens of our data centers in the state of Georgia, where a developer builds a data center and leases it to the end user who, you know, runs their AI and cloud systems within that, within that building. There's, of course, optionality, right? If a hyperscaler comes to us and says, hey, we really want to be in this building, these buildings, these four buildings, we want to buy the land, that's an option, too. But that would, of course, you know, they would have to abide by this, the same, the same rules and the same regulations that we would get approval for. But our biggest case is developing this data center and ultimately leasing it to a hyperscaler.
Okay, gotcha. And then I know we've hit on electricity usage, but the question is, if electric services and the need is not there, let's say, you know, it's going to take till twenty thirty or whatever to be able to get the electricity there. I mean, we potentially are approving annexation, making it light and industrial, and then if that's outside of y'all's timeframe, could y'all potentially move on and do something else with the land instead?
We're willing to commit to only doing data center in conjunction with this project. We're not, you know, we have no interest in, in pivoting and doing any other sort of light industrial, traditional warehouse, et cetera. So really, you know, So really, you know, I can't guarantee if the, you know, that we'll be completely satisfied with the amount of power delivered by Georgia Power, um, off of those lines and the timeline for that. But our goal is to move ahead of this project after tonight, get a site plan approved, and then ultimately secure the power to, 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 to build the campus. But there's no scenario where we said, okay, now it's light industrial, you know, we tricked you guys, we're gonna do, we're gonna do a Walmart warehouse or an Amazon warehouse, that's, that's not gonna happen. We're, we're doing a data center, we're paying a price to a landowner that's, um, healthy enough because we're doing a data center. Um, and so that's, you know, that's what we plan to do.
And just a reminder, warehouses are also a special use now under the UDC too.
Okay. We will go on each of one of these individually with the, um, council has the option to approve, approve the conditions or deny.
And, uh, just for y'all's awareness, uh, staff did recommend approval on all of these items. If you guys want to condition the site to, um, limit the entrances or anything like that, that, I, I believe the applicant would be amenable to that. And, uh, planning commission also recommended denial on all four of these items as well.
And their reasoning again was just not enough information for the most part?
That seemed to be the case. There was some discussion about, uh, the chairman's interpretation of the annexation law, but I've been in conversation with the city attorneys and they have assured me that everything is above board on, um, the process that we're, that we're moving forward with.
What was they concerned? I, I don't know.
Yeah, so, um, the chairman had concerns about the wording of the annexation law, and he stated, I believe, um, that there, it was his interpretation that you can't annex into a property and rezon. But since we are following ZPL, we, uh, we would be okay to do that. We, we've gone through the process that we would have to do. The chairman seemed to believe there was some sort of time restraint on that. But I've spoken with our attorneys and they have assured me that everything is, is, like I said, above board, good to go and all that kind of stuff.
Some questions, questions can be hard, this one is not. The, the law requires you to rezon as you annex. You don't have any choice, they don't want any surprises in the, in bringing property in and then annexing something else. So as you come in, you have to have all, it's one of the, it's triggering the mayor, you have to have the public hearings on everything ahead of time, give the applicant an understanding of, of sort of how it's getting viewed in the zoning standpoint and then take up the, you can't vote on the rezoning till you annex, but you have to do both of those processes as part of the annexation according to state law.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, thank you, Ash. All right, we're back to call for a vote on annexation 2024-001.
So this is the annex three and four, right, was the numbers?
Yeah, there are.
Yes.
Didn't go by part from over there.
Yeah.
So it's really just for this parcel here and this parcel here. So that would be C1520001 and C1720041.
All right, we have a motion to approve from Steve Shelton, a second from Teresa Price. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. Um, we have a tie vote, uh, in that case, the mayor vote, now vote, um, in favor. All right. Future land use map.
So again, not just for these two properties that were just annexed in, changing from the county's designation to our designation of industrial.
Can I make a motion to approve?
Okay, got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion from Teresa and a second from Steve, is there further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item number four, rezon 2024-009.
So that's gonna be for this parcel that's already in the C limits and these two that we just added and updated our future land use map to reflect that we want those to be industrial in the future.
I got a que, I got a question. On the annexation that we done to start off with. We brought in part Amber Stamp Studed Road in that first annexation, right?
I think that's on, I think that's six, seven, eight, best at five, right?
So, so that's Part T Trail, but yeah, that was, yeah, we can, we, that, that would be brought in as well.
Okay. I can see it better on that map than I could the other, the, 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 the layer.
So they're waiting for a motion to, for the rezon?
This is a tough question for you, can we put a restriction on, on it to where that if it's not used for a data center, then it reverts back to AG?
Absolutely, and you can even a, approve it as proposed with that, uh, use plan that is presented to them as an exclusive use. And then if they.
And that would be in the rezon piece of it.
It would, it was, it's just a condition that it be used as proposed in the application and as shown on the site plan and is site plan specific, so.
So if it don't be used, that it has to come back?
It will, it will.
Or we can revert the zoning back to AG in a year's time.
I'll make a motion to, uh, to approve it with the stipulation that it reverts, um, back to AG if there's not a data center put on it, or, uh, lots two, lots three and four reverts back to AG if there's not a data center put on it.
Okay, I'll second that motion. Got a motion from Steve and a second from Tyson, is there further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Special use 2024-001.
And that's for all the parcels except for the Part T Trail parcel. And that's for the data center specific use.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion from Teresa and a second from Steve, is there further discussion? All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, um, I'll take a little break, some of you may have been here just for the public hearing, so I'll give you a chance to, uh, to leave if you want, or you can stick around for the rest of this.
I mean, the man is, the man is.
They got speakers.
I don't know, you probably, you probably.
That house rezoned. They got a driveway.
So they got one right here.
Hope this one really is.
I hope so too.
I told him I ain't coming back no more.
Okay, the meeting is called back to the. All right, Mr. Taylor will take us through the consent agenda.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, we have, um, actually we have eight items on the consent agenda now that, uh, we're not gonna move to new business. Uh, we have approval of the minutes of the mayor and council regular meeting from December the seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four. We have approval of the executive session minutes from December seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four. We have approval of the minutes of the mayor and council work session from January second, two thousand twenty-five. We have approval of executive session minutes from January second, two thousand twenty-five. We have approval of an engineering services contract with precision planning in the amount of thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars for the Cannon Drive water main replacement project and authorize the city manager to sign all related documents. Uh, we have approval of the engineering services contract with precision planning in the amount of twenty-five thousand, sixty dollars for the North Cherokee pressure control valve project and authorize the city manager to sign all related documents. We have an approval of the, uh, new city, uh, purchasing card policy. And then finally, we have a resolution to name the qualifying officer and to set qualifying fees for the two thousand twenty-five election cycle. Recommend approval of the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion from Teresa and a second from Nathan, is there further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, we have no unfinished business, uh, new business, making a mayor pro temp appointment.
I'm not in that, Teresa.
Second. Okay, we have a motion from Steve to appoint, uh, Teresa Price as mayor pro temp, second from Nathan, further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, city clerk appointment?
I'm gonna give a motion to, um, uh, appoint Susan, um, for our city clerk.
Second.
Okay. Uh, motion from Nathan to appoint Susan Roper as the city clerk, second from Steve, further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, city attorney appointment, uh, this would be for Powell Edwards, is that, uh?
Powell and Crawley.
Powell and Crawley.
I guess I'll warn him.
You think he's all right? All right.
I'll second that.
Got a motion from Steve for the appointment of Tony Powell as the city attorney.
Second.
Second from, uh, Nathan, further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Um, municipal judge appointment and authorization of two-year contract. And we do, uh, I've verified with, um, Robbie Ballard that he is, uh, interested in continuing that appointment.
I'm in commission to approve Robbie Ballard.
Second.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Excuse me for asking this at this late date, but, um, Mr. Attorney, does that include the alternate judge as well in, in this process?
How do they do that? Do they do his name?
He, he has a contract as well and was signed at the same time that Ballard did, so.
So do we need to say Robbie Ballard or his designee?
Or he can do two separate motions.
Okay.
Probably, they, whoever that is needs to be appointed by, by formal motion.
So do that, do that need to be a, add a, agenda item?
I thought it was somebody in his office done it.
It is, it's in his office. What's his last name? Barth.
Sam Barth, yeah. I think we can do that without making, uh, change to agenda, just under the city attorney appointment, just include, uh, that other one.
They were the same law firm, I think that's, I think that's exactly right.
But two different motions or same motion?
Same motion.
Probably Ballard is the judge and Sam Barth is his, is his.
Okay.
Do we have an amendment?
I'll revise my motion to reflect that.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, all right, motion from Nathan, is there a second?
Second. Oh, it was Steve.
Steve. All right, second from Steve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, next up, we have some board appointments.
Matt John Gardner, just planning and zoning.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion from Steve to appoint, uh, John Gardner to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, second from Nathan, is there further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. Motion passes. Any further board appointments?
I don't have any at this time.
I think, is everybody else willing to serve, so we can go down and, like downtown development?
Everybody, everybody else has indicated willingness to continue.
So do we have to take them one at a time right there?
Board by board would be.
What's my, per person?
I think board by board would be.
Yeah, you could do the board and then say, and indicate who you're reappointing or appointing.
Okay, I'll make a motion to reappoint Debbie Connor Smith and Laurie Maddox to the Downtown Development Authority.
Second.
Okay, motion from Tyson and a second from Steve, further discussion? Okay, motion from Tyson and a second from Steve, further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion passes.
I'll make a motion to approve James Williams, Lynn Mills, and Debbie Smith to the Historic Preservation.
Second.
Okay, we mo, got a motion from Nathan and a second from Tyson, is there further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
I do have a question on Main Street Commission. Since we revised, revised all of the bylaws, they were already included in that, right? They were just served the shorter term, correct? Like to make them offset, isn't that right?
Right.
Yes.
Their term was still ending in January twenty twenty five.
They were not reappointed at that time, you need to reappoint them. It, it, well, when you did reappoint them, it was to fill... Just that small, yeah, that little window, yeah. Gotcha.
So they gotta read the reappoint.
Right.
So, but, yeah.
For, for the full term, yeah.
Donna Jean Lightfoot and Susan Fair, Main Street Commission.
Second.
Okay, a motion from Steve and a second from Teresa, further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
I'll make a motion to approve Karinen Mills to the Social Circle Development Authority.
Second.
Good, motion from Nathan and a second from Steve, further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion passes.
And I will make a motion to, um, appoint Barbara Sams, Edith Foreman, and Rosemary Sells to the tree board.
Second.
Motion from Nathan and a second from Teresa. All in favor say aye. Or any, any opposed? Motion carries. Is that it?
No. I thought we moved the item. Oh, you're talking about, is it for the...
Yeah, yeah.
I was like, I thought we pulled something out of the consent.
No. No, I'm good, it, it got canceled, so I'm fine. We could've met later, sorry.
Yeah.
We have, um...
Yeah, why not? Let's get home earlier now. Yeah.
Item, item number six, under new business.
Yeah, this, this is for, uh, an approval to transfer approximately four point six acres from parcel SC one seven zero zero seven seven. Um, that's address thirty five, three forty-five Vine Circle, which is the address that the sewer plant sits on. Uh, transferred to the Social Circle Board of Education and authorize the city manager to execute all related documents. What this is, is that, um, the city has a need for a five, approximately five point two acre easement, to connect the old sewer plant with the new sewer plant. And it runs through the, uh, school property and it's reflected in green on the, on the site plan we have, um, up there. That's, as, as currently designed, uh, well, let me rephrase, rephrase that. As the future site plan for the, uh, future middle school currently is designed, the site, the sewer easement will run through the portion of the driveway and will touch a, a small portion of the parking lot. And so the, uh, the school system has expressed some, some concerns about any potential disruptions should the city ever need to, um, access those, uh, particular, uh, pieces. And so we have worked out an agreement with them, um, where if we transfer this four point six acres from, uh, three forty-five Vine Circle, this would allow them to push the site plan for the future middle school farther back into the, uh, property, which will allow then, uh, for us to have the easement that's needed. And, um, I recommend approval on this. I believe this, this was supposed to go before the school board, uh, here recently. And so, um, we need to do this so that we can move ahead on our, on our sewer plant.
Is the easement in the agreement or no? It's just...
Um, no, it wouldn't be.
Okay.
Now, we didn't know where it was gonna go when we gave them the property.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand that, does it need to be in, in that, that we're transferring that?
No, what we need from them is, is for them to agree to give us the easement, which I believe they've done.
Okay, cool. Well, then I will make a motion to approve the transfer of the four point six acres to the school board.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Nathan and a second from Steve, further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Uh, I put down item seven, but I failed to write if there's something...
I got it. I got you covered. So item number seven was, was, uh, moved from the consent agenda. This is, uh, um, approval of an engineering services contract with precision planning in the amount of fifty-five thousand one hundred and ninety dollars for the Lakewood Drive Water Main Replacement Project and authorize the city manager to sign all related documents. We asked that this be moved from the consent to new business because the dollar amount changed.
I was gonna say, that's what's on here.
Yeah, when we, when we talked about it at the work session, we had talked about, um, uh, running the water line to connect, uh, Muselia Farms to Lakewood. And so, uh, the, the price difference is to reflect, um, that pipe, the engineering for that pipe to go from eight, from a six inch to an eight inch.
It didn't make any sense, they're gonna leave some plastic in there? We already having problems with it busting?
Right.
Get it all out, we're getting it out.
So...
And so we went from forty-six thousand three hundred and eighty to what?
To, uh, fifty-five thousand one ninety.
Okay, so ten thousand. Yeah, Lakewood's bad in shape, so, there we go.
Make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Okay, motion from Steve and a second from Tyson, further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion passes. All right, we do have a need for an executive session for potential discussion of litigation, real estate, or personnel. Thank you all for coming. John, congratulations on your appointment.